All right, looking at our agenda. We have members present, all three members are present. Okay, the first item on our agenda, before we even start, I have an item that I'm hoping we can add to our agenda. Both Bill and Roger have received materials about it, it's about the poet laureate for Ashford. And what I'm gonna do is about 7:30, we'll have the people involved with that will join our meeting. So do we have Jim on our meeting tonight?
I sent him an agenda. Let me give him a call.
Okay, that would be good because he is number three on this. Since he has a meeting, I believe, at 7:30, so we were trying to get him up front in this.
Grab my phone, see who just texted me.
Okay.
He will join for a minute, so if you wanna go to Cheryl.
That sounds good.
And then interrupt her when he comes on.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay Cheryl, actually, this is, item number four is action on town of Ashford money purchase pension plan. Okay, having received the materials that you have, Bill and Roger, do you have particular questions of Cheryl, or would you like her to describe the plan to you?
Well, I read over what you forwarded us before the last meeting. And did have a couple of questions, Cheryl, isn't this something that we normally meet on a, I know there's a pension committee meets annually. It's made up of the first selectman, yourself, I think, the union steward, and I'm not sure if there's another regular member of the union, but isn't that something that normally is done on an annual basis, and any recommendations would come from that committee?
We meet, yes, we meet at least annually, usually two or three times a year. And we just discuss with the we discuss with the person who is administering the plan, or who is investing for the plan, and discuss how the quarterly report has progressed.
Has that happened this year, Cheryl, or?
We have not met. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We haven't met with the person who has, who has been investing the funds, because January is too difficult for me to personally set aside a couple of hours to go over the report and then meet with someone. So usually, we don't meet in January for the December quarterly report, but we would meet in April. We did meet this year to discuss switching, you know, the things that you've been sent, but we didn't discuss, didn't have the quarterly report at that point.
Okay, and who was at that meeting, Cheryl?
Catherine as first selectman, myself as treasurer, and Karen Zulik as the union president.
Okay, and when was that?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
January. We had one meeting in January, and we had a follow-up meeting in, actually, the meeting was in early February, now that I think about it.
I don't remember. I'd have to look back at my calendar.
I can look back at my records, Bill, if you'd like to know when that meeting was.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and was this discussed at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and it was a recommendation of the pension committee to do this?
It was a recommendation, and the union had, also had a meeting, the union members had a meeting, so that they would be aware, and they, the, I think all but one of the members was virtually present at the meeting, and they all agreed that this was a positive step for them.
And Cheryl, would you refresh my memory, how did those meetings come about, is it part of the pension plan itself, or you know, is that something the auditors check in on, or I don't remember how that was originated.
The meetings have been happening since before I was in this position, so I don't know the, how they started happening. It could be in the pension letter, which also is very antiquated and needs to be updated.
I think it started back when I was first selectman, and I thought it was, I don't think we had bylaws or a charter with the pension, but I thought it was something that was required.
It could be in the pension letter, I would have to go over it again.
Yeah.
I believe the meeting started when Paula and the board of selectmen adopted the pension plan, so that would have been in the
Ninety-eight.
No.
No, no, much before then, I think it started, I think I inherited the makings of the union when George Quirk left office. So that would have been, I think he left office in
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
And Paula, it was Paula Fritz and Mark Sullivan who started the pension plan. That was the board of selectmen at that point.
And at that time, a money purchase pension plan was more the norm, whereas now municipalities and companies have moved away from it in favor of something more progressive.
Jim is in the meeting. Can you talk quickly? Jam?
Is Jim muted?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can switch back to item number three, act upon recommendation received from advisory school building committee regarding the proposal to ease space on the Ashford school, I'm sorry, lease space on the Ashford school roof.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, so Jim, we all received the letter that was the recommendation from that committee about leasing that space, and the recommendation was not to do that, correct?
That's correct.
So, Bill, did you have any additional questions you wanted to ask about that?
In the letter, Jim, you had mentioned there perhaps are alternatives, could you elaborate on that at all?
Well, I mean, I think this is just in, you know, our thoughts were, I can't say I, because this wasn't just me. The thoughts of the committee were that, you know, this was just a quick, easy answer, because it's down the hill, it's got a good line of sight. Although I haven't had a discussion with the company that's proposing this, you know, there are other structures and other opportunities within the town that would likely solve the same problem for them. This is just an easy one, and I, my understanding is that, you know, they've had partnerships like this in the past. And so it was just, I think it was, the school was their first point of contact, I don't think they looked at other solutions.
Okay. I mean, your points in your letter are well taken, I certainly don't think, at a time when we're planning a a major construction job up there, within the area they're talking about, it makes any sense for us to enter any agreement. But I was just curious if there was any specifics as to alternatives.
No, I mean, you know, we didn't, we didn't go get that far into it, but I think, you know, the really big thing for the committee is they were really concerned about security, both with, you know, internet security at the school, and the possibility of, you know, having other people, you know, having to service their equipment within the school building, you know, potentially during school hours.
Yeah.
You know, those, there are certainly concerns that we have to consider in this day and age, unfortunately.
No, and I even think, I mean, if that sort of thing was ever considered in the future, I think that's something that definitely has to be addressed. And you can't just give carte blanche to entry to that school, anybody, you know, you'd have to know who was coming in and given an opportunity to vet those people.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, you know, exactly what the committee was thinking.
Yeah. That's pretty much the questions I had, Catherine, and
Okay.
I know Roger, did you have any comment, or?
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at the special meeting minutes from the Ashford Board of Education. And their concern was that somehow the town building committee voted it down, but it should have been brought to the Board of Education, does that have a basis, or? I mean, I thought you were representing the best interests of the, of the buildings and the school, so.
You know, I think we are, but, you know, I think it's our opinion that, you know, this building is owned by the town, it's not owned by the Board of Education. And that decision really should be made by the Board of Selectmen, and not by the Board of Education. Although, although input from the Board of Education obviously should be considered. And I would say, you know, if the Board of Selectmen were to vote in favor of this, you know, those funds, you know, would go back to the Board of Selectmen and not to the school board. You know, the town government funds the Board of Education, caring for the building and educating our children. So, you know, that's my thoughts on it, you know, some of those are personal thoughts rather than, you know, a commentary from the committee.
No, I think you're spot on.
Yeah, and I think
Catherine, can I, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to respond to the proponents of this, and tell them at this time, it is not an opportune time for us to consider it. And if in the future it does come up, we will consult with, we will get back to them and consult with the Board of Ed and the building committee further on it, but at this time, we are not going to consider it.
All right, would you put that in the form of a motion?
I tried.
Try again.
I'll move that we respond to the proponents of this proposal, that at this time, the Board of Selectmen is recommending that is, is not going to consider it because of our school, ongoing school projects. Period. If in the future we would consider it, we would work jointly with the school building committee and the Board of Education for their input.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I mean, I'll second it, I mean, I just second it on the grounds that we're supporting the recommendations from our building committee.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roger, opposed? Abstain?
I voted aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, motion passes, thank you very much, that's taken care of. Thank you very much, Jim, for your diligence on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Better, Jim.
Okay, and in all of our flexibility, rolling back to Cheryl. So, let's see, going back to where we left off, the
When, when we were discussing it at our last meeting, Catherine, I suggested that you consult with town council and make sure there were no legal implications that we weren't aware of.
Can you ask me, let me just ask the question of you. What would we specifically ask town council?
Whether or not there are any legal implications to us changing over to the plan that's being suggested.
Legal.
And one other thing
According to the That would be according
Was that the town has nothing to do with this, we don't contribute to it, and I think it's the opposite. Last I knew, we contribute seven, seven percent of everyone's salaries to that, and it's optional whether the employees are going to contribute on their own.
Well, that's fifty percent correct, the town, this is a money purchase pension plan, so only the town can contribute to it. And it is seven percent according to the investment policy that we have now in the union contract. By changing it to 401A, it would still only be a plan that the town could contribute to, but the percentage could be used by both sides in negotiation, so it wouldn't just be set at seven percent anymore, it could be negotiable up or down by either party. Also, in
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, also, something else we're considering is another 457 plan, excuse me, that the employees couldn't contribute to on their own, that the town wouldn't match or contribute to. So there are some people, we currently have an ICAMA plan, that's a 457, but it is not, it's not diverse, there are only specific investments allowed. But by creating another 457 plan, that the employees could contribute and and invest as much as they wanted and where they wanted, which is also true with the 401A. With the, with the money purchase pension plan, it's a pool of money, it's just a bunch of money in a pool that gets invested, and then at the end of every month, the statement comes to me, and I figure out how much of that pool belongs to each of the participants. With the 401A, it would be broken down by employee, they would have access to the, to the plan twenty-four seven, if they get up at three o'clock in the morning and wanted to know what they had in their pension plan, they could log in and see what portion was theirs, currently, there's no mechanism for that. And also, with the 401A, the employees will be able to choose their investments if they, if they would like to, which is not possible now.
Now, the plan that we have now, Cheryl, does, does one of the employees have the option to contribute, or you're saying there's no option?
No option with the money purchase pension plan or the 401A, it would have to be, if employees want to contribute, it would have to be to the 457 plan.
Thank you.
So when we, when we talk about getting a legal opinion, I think of that as the attorney interpreting the law, not making a decision about whether or not this is a good plan or a bad plan, that's more of a commerce kind of situation. So I guess I'm asking for the specific kind of question we would ask the town attorney, who also doesn't, in this case, I don't believe deals in pension plans.
Yeah, I was, I was more interested not in him passing a favorable or unfavorable to what the proposal is, strictly asking him if there were any legal implications to, to us changing that he, he saw. Not his signing off on a particular plan.
Well, if you're asking if it's favorable or unfavorable, that is looking at it from a more commerce perspective.
I guess that's your
As opposed to law.
It's all very regulated, it's all very regulated, if that, if that's any consolation. The people doing the record keeping and the investing all have to be very above board and are scrutinized regularly.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, if you mean the difference between the, the money purchase pension plan and the 401A, the 401M versus the 401A, the for most towns, I actually don't know any towns anymore that are part of a money purchase pension plan, they've all moved away to to the more progressive plan.
Also, Cheryl, would you mind just taking a minute and describing what you have to do to administer the current plan, because if I understand correctly, it's pretty fraught with risk.
It is if I make a mistake, as long as I don't make a mistake, we're okay.
But you have to do a lot manually, is that correct?
I have to, I've created a probably thirty-page workbook that helps me to administer this. And each month, so the beginning of the year, I have to start the workbook with beginning balances, invested interest, and then every month I have to put in the, the interest, the amount reinvested, the change in policy, or I'm sorry, the change in investments, any fees that come out, and send that to a master spreadsheet that then tallies the the amount of the total investment that belongs to each employee. And I only report it once a year, because throughout the year, I'm constantly checking it. I, I do my calculation, and then every couple of months, I do another calculation to make sure that the figures are all, all correct, using, using a different method.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
You're doing that all in Excel, is that correct?
That's correct.
And tell me, if you, could you elaborate on how it would be done differently with what's been proposed?
So, sending it to a record keeper who does this for multiple towns and companies on a much larger scale than ours, we're relatively a small pension plan. They would be able to put it into their system as, as a whole, and have it then calculate on a regular basis the same thing that I do, but more quickly and with more, more checks and balances than I can provide.
I also believe they have more automation, in other words, they basically have a process that will take the information from our system and bring it into their process.
Right, I
It's not manual like you do.
Right, I would provide them with, with the workbook that I have, and then they would use, you know, computer-generated, a computer-generated program to, to do, you know, much more quickly what I do manually.
And how much hands-off would you be at that point, if we were using the new system?
The initial, the initial big workbook probably takes me a couple of hours. Not counting all the interruptions that happen throughout a day, so I'm guessing about a couple hours. And then again, at the end of the year, because it has to be figured out twice, once with the contribution and once without the contribution, that's probably another couple of hours, and monthly, probably, well, depending on how much activity there is, it would probably be, probably a half hour a month if there was no activity. But, but if someone leaves and takes their money, that's a whole nother calculation and a whole nother, you know, set of things to do.
Okay, so let me be, let me make sure I'm clear. So when we think about what you do today with the old system, and what would be done with the new system, with a new, new plan, what's the difference in the amount of manual effort on your part and the risk?
It's, it's, so the manual effort is not my, my first concern, it's the risk involved with making a calculation error, entering, because I have to manually enter in at the beginning of the year, everybody's beginning balance, and every year, enter in everybody's calculated contribution. There's always risk for error, and there's nobody who checks this. The auditors look at it, but on a month-to-month basis, I I'm on my own.
And so with the new process, with the new plan, tell me
So the new process would be, I would just, I would give it to them, and then they would run, it would just be a running balance for them, because they have the program to do it, and we, we don't have that program. They will just be able to, their ending balance will be their beginning balance, and they won't have to be doing all of the manual entry, and there will be that much less risk.
And how would those, and, and how would those, how often would we meet with them to review anything, would it be quarterly as we've done?
It would be as often as we wanted, they would meet, they would meet with just us, with the union, with, you know, all of the employees.
Plus they offer training.
They do offer training, they have online classes that if people are interested in investing on their own, they can log into these training sessions, they're also recorded, so if they're not available when the training session is happening, they can go back and listen to the recording. And there will be people that they can contact with questions, and there are, are some people who would actively like to manage their own accounts, and they, they're, have questions that I'm not willing to answer or research for them, it's just, it's not my forte.
Cheryl, how are they, how are they compensated for those efforts that they do for us, for the members?
How would we be with the new company?
Yes.
This isn't available now, then with the new company, it's all part of their fee, so there's a fee charge, just as there is now based on the size of the, the fund.
So it's based on a percentage of the, the total funds? And is that how it's done now?
Yes.
Do you have any ballpark figure what that fee is anyway?
It should be in the paperwork that you have, and I grabbed the wrong folder, embarrassingly enough.
I don't know why I thought it was seventy-five hundred dollars, I can't remember in total.
I have a pension folder, but it's not the right one.
Yeah, um, you know what? I think I might have it here.
It should be in the information that you received.
Yes, it was definitely something else, let's see, I'd take that back, it is, I've got it, it is total estimated fees were five thousand two hundred ninety and twenty-five cents in total.
This is for the existing program or the proposed?
Proposed.
And do we know what it was for the existing?
I think it was slightly higher with the existing.
Cheryl, the only thing that I show I got was your, your copies of your correspondence.
You should have, I'm gonna show you what the thing is that we're talking about. Looks like this.
And you sent that to us?
Yes, you have that.
Did you get that, Roger?
Roger.
You're on mute, Roger.
Sorry, I had a phone call from my brother, I was just celebrating us on our twenty-eighth wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations, that's nice. We're still young, young lovers.
Yeah.
Something that looks like this, Roger.
Yes, I looked at that.
Very good.
I went to the website, and
I sent a very large packet to both of you
Yep.
On, I think it was like the ninth of February.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I got it.
And if you look towards the back, you'll find that it has plan assumptions, this page that looks like, yeah. Let's just make sure I got it right. Make sure I know which one it is here. So do me a favor, if, do you have it right there, Roger, bring your chance. I'm looking here at I'll take that back, I think it is seven thousand. They waived the transaction startup fee. I think it's seven thousand one hundred six dollars. Cheryl, I don't know if you, you probably don't have it there.
So the proposed ballpark fee is less than what we're paying right now on top of it?
It is, yes. Not, not a huge difference, but it is less.
Besides, a lot less headache for you?
Well, Well, it it's, it's the risk bill, really, that that is my concern. When I took it on fifteen years ago or whatever it was, it was, it was a budget issue and so said, sure, I'll do it and I got it and it wasn't balanced, so I had to, you know, work around that and just things get more complicated as time goes on and and there are people, I prefer that people who know what they're doing and are up on all the rules and can assist the employees with questions that they have, I would prefer it if we could go in that direction.
Thank you very much for the info.
You're welcome.
Okay, where do we stand on this?
I assume the floor is open for a motion. Roger, you want to make a motion?
I mean, it's, you know, as long as, you know, all employees are well aware of what they're getting into in terms of and are happy with the decision. I guess, you know, it to have your choice in terms of, you know, making your investments in your future, I guess. You know, it's, it seems to be a good, good way to go.
The employees are aware. The employees were positive about this, not only the union employees, but also the town.
I I stopped by the garage. I only talked to one of the guys there and you know, he's kind of a little bit nervous, you know, he doesn't have that, you know, sort of background and and what have you, but you know, he's talking in terms of someone else was, you know, kind of, you know, good, I can have a say in terms of how my money's invested and what have you. So, I mean, it sounded like there's a little bit of uncertainty in terms of, you know, how to go about it. But, you know, in looking at the site and what have you, I mean, they do offer, you know, training and in terms of what you want to do with it. So I thought that that was positive.
And it's not, it's not necessary for them to manage it themselves. The the option is still available to let the managers manage it.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor or will we?
I mean, I'll I'll make the motion to to move forward, you have to go with this, I mean.
Okay, so it is to, if I understand the motion, it is to approve.
Conversion over to this new system or whatever. New program.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. Any more discussion? All in favor? I opposed, abstain. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl, for dialing in and clarifying this for us. And for all your work researching it and working with these groups to come up with something good for the employees.
We didn't pick the first one or the second one.
So thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too. I see Christine's on. So what I'd like to do is entertain, have somebody make a motion to add action on poet laureate, Ashford poet laureate to the agenda.
Yep, seconded.
Okay, so we've got the motion, the second, all in favor? Opposed, abstain. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Christine, thank you for sending all the materials that you did to all three selectmen. And from what I gathered, reading through everything, you did quite a bit of research, you really approached this in the right way in terms of looking for candidates. And, you know, you made an investment in it and it sounds like you came up with a really terrific candidate. Ashford's poet laureate. And if I understand correctly, you're looking for that person to be the poet laureate for a period of three years, was it? And I see that we have that candidate here.
We do, so.
Yes, we do.
He's prepared to read something if you'd like.
I thought, Bill and Roger, I thought it would be a nice idea. I don't know about you, but I have been unfortunate because I have not heard any of Tony's poems or read them. It is my understanding that you have published in some journals. And you have been very active in this area and, God, I've known you for years. I had no idea. I'm sorry. And that you actually, I believe, know a number of other poet laureates in other towns and perhaps the one for the state. So, and so you've been involved with this for quite a while and who knew you had this special talent? Sorry, I didn't. So if you would, would you mind reading one of your poems for us so that the other selectmen, if they haven't heard any of them, they could hear it from the actual author, poet?
Sure. First, first of all, you know, I'm very honored to to have been nominated and and chosen by the Arts Committee. And I have had half a dozen poems published in the last year or to be published. And I could read I think I'll read, read one that's going to be published in the spring in a in a anthology. It was a competition and and I didn't win the competition, but I I I made the cut to be in the anthology. And it's, it was, it was a worldwide competition, so the the publication is put out by a small poetry press that's located actually in southwest England called Hedgehog Poetry Press. And they will be publishing this in an anthology, as I said, in the spring. And it was based on a theme, the competition titled Looking Out and Peering In. And it was really challenging people to think about what we've been going through in the past year. And and how it's affected our lives. Particularly when we were not able to socially engage on a, on a, on a level that we're used to, so. I will read this one. It's called Out of Time. My thoughts tangle no cause. My voice affords no refuge. My arms embrace no one. This is how we live now, close to the bone, alone. All out of reasons for answers. All out of time for love. Still, at evenings sometimes in June, just at the moment when fireflies first appear in the near darkness like blinking stars suddenly close at hand. It is possible to imagine a traveler in space boundless in the deep surrounding blue, bearing towards some distant homing beacon, eyes wide open to what lies ahead with all the time in the world.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So would either of you two selectmen like to make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to do a proclamation? To be drafted up for you? Naming Tony the poet laureate of the town of Ashford, Connecticut. I can't hear you, Roger. You're on mute.
I would certainly make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion other than to thank Tony and to thank Christine for bringing this forward?
I think, I think something that I don't, you didn't mention, but the Ashford Arts Council is giving the honorarium for Tony. So, you know, that's, that's part of what the Arts Council has put in as their contribution to this, so.
So when you say the honorarium, when it comes to a proclamation of some kind, is that honorarium it's being bestowed by the Ashford Arts Council? So when it comes to the Board of Selectmen?
No, it comes to Tony.
No, I'm asking you, when it comes to what the Board of Selectmen is doing tonight. Is we are making him the poet laureate of the town of Ashford.
Yes, so you're just, you're, you're appointing him the town poet laureate, yeah. So you're giving him kind of that, that title.
Very good. Okay, all in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion passes gratefully. Okay, I did hear that you may have a celebration that you're going to do, some kind of an event.
Yes, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a celebration poetry event on March twenty first, which is actually International Poetry Day or World Poetry Day. Now I can't remember. So we'll be having a Zoom celebration. We'll be putting a notice in the citizen. It will feature Tony, maybe telling us a little about what his vision is for the, his role and reading some poetry. And we're all, we're thinking now about maybe having an open mic. I haven't talked about this to Tony yet, but. I'm sorry, what? March twenty first. So we'll put a, we'll put a notice in the Ashford Citizen about that and and hope that it can be a celebration with as many people that want to come.
I'll be there. Sounds terrific. Thank you. Thanks for the gift.
We have a poet laureate. How cool is that?
Way cool.
Way cool.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, review of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two general government budget recommendations. Killing me here. Okay, I'm going to share my Who's pup is that?
That's mine.
Good thing I'm not at home because your dog barking was at my dog barking. Just a second here. Just want to grab something. I'm going to pull this up on spreadsheet up. I was taking another look at it. We did walk through it during our last meeting. We have maybe two parts to this. I know it says on the agenda, looking at the general government budget, but I think we also have the opportunity to look at the capital improvement budget as well as a board of selectmen because Capital Improvement Committee completed their recommendation at Saturday's meeting. And it was a pretty good meeting. So let me just do this and see if I can share this correctly. I was doing well, too. Let me just check. Thank you for your patience. Just having a little trouble sharing. Trying to get back to the Zoom page. Pay no attention to the woman behind the curtain.
Sometimes I wish we could go back to meeting at like Nolton Hall with lots of table space.
Oh, tell me about it. You know, we'd all prefer that. Forgive me because what is happening is I'm just trying to get to the bigger picture here of all of you. And my lights are going off. And I can see this. Just have a little trouble finding the Zoom. And I know I could see it. Oh, there, that's bigger. Okay. So now to share. Okay, so I'm looking at where I can share my screen. So I'm looking for some guidance from John. Because normally I can see something down on the bottom. Oh, here it is, share screen. I got it. And I want to take us to the budget worksheet.
If need be, if Chris could email me the worksheet or whatever and I could share my screen if that.
No, that's okay because I'm going to be actually typing into. Go along, so, but thank you. I'm just a, had a couple, too many things open here.
Yeah, it would be best to sort of like eliminate any unnecessary windows at this point.
Thanks, Dad. I'm getting there. Just bear with me a little.
And drive slowly.
All right, I just want to make sure I got the right one. Okay, so here we go. And it is this one. That's the one I want to share. Can you see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Excellent.
Thank you. I'm sorry for the delay. All right, I'm going to move this over because I might get on the other machine. If I can get it there. So with the lights. Too cheap to have the electrician come back in. All right, you can see it on the screen it's on? Okay, good. All right, I gotta make it a little smaller. You have I believe you have this information. So how do you want to approach this? We've been through this budget before. You've had a chance to take a look at it.
Okay, I had a quick question because on Friday, on February fifth, I've got two different budgets. So I'm calling one the old one, one the new one.
The new one would be the the latest one you got.
Okay, I'm looking at the Board of Selectmen and it shows a point two percent increase. And when I run down the tally And when I run down the tallies of the difference, the numbers don't add up.
Well, be fussy like that.
Sorry.
Okay, let's see, so the numbers that don't add up are what?
When you come down the column, I'm, so I'm dealing, uh, so if you go up your screen.
I'm down at the bottom.
I'm looking at Board of Selectmen uh, on the first page.
What's the date at the top, Roger, top left?
Well, I got February fifth, twenty twenty one on both of them.
Cause there's a February ninth, twenty twenty one.
Oh. Never mind. Hold on then. Oh, hold on, back to the computer.
It would have been ninth. So, Chris?
Yep.
Do you have the Excel version of that or is that a PDF?
I think it's a PDF, it's whatever you gave me.
Can you double check, because I don't send you PDFs typically.
I don't think you ever sent it to me, I think you handed it to me.
Okay. So um, at the bottom of the PDF, does it say ninety thousand four oh seven?
At the bottom of.
The report, it for expenses. Two point six three percent.
The one I'm looking at, hard copy, I've got four point three percent. Was that the first?
Um. But that's, that stated, the the one I have still dated the fifth.
Yeah, that's the one I have, Roger.
So.
Um. Hold on.
Let me just do this.
There were there were two budget worksheets that were sent to me on Friday two five.
Yep, the last one.
And one was the updated.
Yeah, what was?
And that's the newer of the two.
Yeah.
Okay, and the newer of the two shows a point two percent increase on the bottom of that sheet.
Point two percent?
Yep.
Okay.
Catherine, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm just gonna run out and take my dog out real quickly, so don't have any technology issues in the next two minutes.
I promise not to.
Would you feed my dogs, John? They're hungry.
Oh, oh, hold on, that might have been the, uh, I'm sorry, I got the old with the new confused, hold on.
I thought so, okay, so what you should, what you should see is a two point six three percent general government. Which is what I'm showing on the screen, okay? Also, uh, I've put in the region nineteen number, that is the superintendent's, original superintendent's uh, budget, which means there's room for, room for improvement. And this is the Ashford's portion, can you all see this, I know you're kind of looking down, but if you uh, look up at the screen, this is the bottom of that, that budget. Okay, and we have a ninety thousand increase here.
We're still, I'm still looking at your town offices' operation maintenance. On your screen.
That's what you're seeing on the screen?
Yep.
You're not seeing the um, okay, well.
I've got maintenance of town property, town office, building, operation, maintenance, it's item forty on, or round item forty one on your spreadsheet.
Okay.
Forty one.
Let me just.
What you're showing up on the screen is pages. There are pages.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do another share, hang on.
Page eleven.
Yeah, page two of eleven.
The two point six three total increase and I see the ninety thousand four oh seven.
Okay.
But that stated February fifth, it doesn't say update, does yours say updated, Roger?
Uh, no, no, just, it says updated from the attachment that was on my uh, Outlook uh, what was sent to me via Outlook. It doesn't say updated, that's why I got confused.
So when you look at my screen, at the screen right now.
Yep.
Do you see the uh?
Yep, February fifth.
February fifth.
And the four point three percent, we're, we're, I've got the same sheet in my hand.
You say four point three percent, I'm looking down here and it's not four point three percent.
That's the Selectmen's budget, I think he's looking at.
Yeah, I'm looking at Selectmen's budget.
Selectmen's budget is, oh, I'm sorry, you're up, you're just looking at a department?
I think.
Yes, there you go.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at the right sheet, that's all.
Yeah, actually, what I want you to look at is just the bottom, because that's the, the, nothing changed in the Selectmen's budget between versions.
And that's that page eleven out of eleven?
It would be the very last page, yes.
Okay.
So if you look down there, it should say two point six three percent increase, ninety thousand four oh seven, as a general government budget increase.
I have that.
Very good, okay, so what I've just typed in here for you is the proposed budget by region nineteen, uh, which again is at a superintendent level right now. So it's again, it's got room for improvement, that's gonna go down at least nine point twelve percent. Okay. And what I, what I would like to say, well, let's just, uh, are there any particular areas of this budget you'd like to look at? We walked through the entire thing before. So I can, you know, cruise through it and we can talk about any of the areas that um, you have a concern about or you have questions about.
No, we, so we're looking at the two point six three percent increase, now what's the deal with the two and a half percent uh, state?
Oh, we learned, well, Bill, Bill brought us some information, he actually shared it during the capital improvements committee meeting on Saturday. And if I understand correctly, Bill, the two point five percent uh, uh, what am I saying, stick? If I understand correctly, they're holding off, they're not really going to fine us on that at this point.
What I was trying to do, and I think somebody else commented on that, trying to remember who it was, Catherine, um, that they'd also followed up on it, but I got informal information from a contact I have at OPM.
Good.
Said that the legislation that was passed, and I apologize because I had asked for the number and I never got it, but that it, it was flawed in the language it had, and that it was not gonna be applicable for this year, that they're gonna have to revisit that and rewrite the language. And I'm assuming they're gonna do it in this session, but they don't think it's gonna be applicable to this budget. But that was all kind of hearsay and, I don't, you know, a slight measure above off the record.
Well, I'm, I'm, I went and looked at the law and the law seemed to state that, you know, in the event of, you know, kind of like natural disaster hardship or what have you, um, those costs incurred wouldn't be part of the budget. And so I'm just, you know, when we sit there and we look at, you know, identifying seven, over seventy thousand dollars being related directly to COVID, you know, that we're getting some money or we've spent for, um, wouldn't, would that get us down below the two and a half?
I, to tell you the truth, right now, based upon what I'm hearing, I wouldn't be too focused on the two and a half and, and you've got to remember something, that the two and a half is, it applies to the entire budget, not just general government, entire budget, less the bonding, and I, there was something else, um, so.
Was it? Special Ed, I think was exempted?
Yeah, I think especially, very good, special Ed, so when we um, we're talking about all of this, on the uh, the, we don't have all the information here to assess whether or not we'd even be at the two and a half percent. Okay, um, we can't just look at the general government budget that way, that's not really, it's just a piece of the pie. So um, what we do need, I did hear that, uh, I don't know what the two of you have heard, I did hear very informally that the school was looking for three percent, Ashford School.
I, I've asked for a hint to that, but I, I haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah, they're gonna present their budget in uh, next week to the Board of Finance, then we'll know what that is, but even if I were to take, let's just take their old, let's do this for kicks and giggles. If we did this, if if we put it at three percent. And we went like so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, there was, uh, and if you look at the Board of Education minutes from February fourth, they stated that a motion by Kim uh, Waltie uh, to accept the propos- proposed budget with a two point nine eight percent increase.
Hmm. Two point nine eight?
Two point nine eight, this is their uh, Ashford Board of Education regular meeting minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty one.
Okay. Let me think for a second, through my head. So the difference between the two years is only thirty four thousand and four dollars.
Um, I got more than that, I just did a rough calculation, let me see what I get in total.
Really? Fifteen oh seven three. This is.
I'm getting, I'm getting two thirty eight four four seven point seven one.
So the difference between
That was based on a.
Year and, and the, the proposed year, if you look at these numbers, so for last, the current year's budget is fifteen one oh seven zero zero eight, is that correct? That's this number right here, can you see my thingy? So this is what's being.
Yeah, I, I did my calculation on the board of, on the Ashford School budget.
So here's what I did, I have the region nineteen proposed budget right here, this line.
Yep.
Line three seventy eight, I have the general government budget, what we have, the ninety thousand four oh seven increase, and I have the Ashford School budget with a calculate, being a calculated number of eight million four hundred and six dollars, uh, which is a two point nine percent increase. So if I take those numbers, I total them up, I get this fifteen million seventy three thousand and four dollars, or four dollars. And the difference between that total and the total that we have for the current year is thirty four thousand dollars less in total, and that's because region nineteen went down so much, when all is said and done. Chris, are you adding?
I'm adding.
I knew you were, so that.
So, wait one sec, sure, so I'm doing zero point two nine eight of seven million seven sixty eight, eight ninety three.
Is.
And I come up with two thirty one, five thirteen.
Increase, yep, I got it here.
Right?
Yeah. I love that old fashioned sound. I need my abacus. Well, I'm just gonna do the same thing here.
Eight million four hundred and six.
Got it, same thing here. So if you take the eight million four hundred and six, three million five forty five, six oh eight, three, five, two, six, nine, nine, zero, and you add them all up, you come up with fifteen million seventy three thousand four dollars, so Bill, I'll show it to you here. Ashford School, Region nineteen, General Government, what's being proposed for this year? And then the fif- the total is the fifteen million seventy three thousand four dollars, if you look at the column to the left, that's what it was for the current year. So when all is said and done, the difference is uh, a decrease of thirty four thousand four dollars. And if I look at that and I do the math on the percentage, it's minus two point three percent overall. So I'm not even gonna worry about the uh, two point five percent deal. Because that's, well, unless we, uh, if we take out the bonding. Uh, but I'm, again, I don't think that's a focus for us right now. Just trying to get to what our number would be.
Did you say Board of Ed is, is gonna come up with a final figure on Thursday?
Um, the, next Thursday, they will be presenting to the Board of Finance.
They have to.
They'll be sending out their budget uh, request before that. We should get a good, good wind of it, but um, Roger, you said when looking at their minutes, they said that what they were going to submit was a two point nine percent increase, is that correct?
Yep, uh.
Two point nine eight, he said.
Yeah, two point nine eight, yep. Which is what I show here, that's how I did the math.
Yep, two point nine eight, motion by Kim to accept the proposed budget with a two point nine eight, seconded by Jane Urban and carried unanimously.
Very good.
And Roger, what was that, was that a, a solid vote or was that in anticipation of finalizing it this coming Thursday?
It doesn't say.
Okay.
If, if they're accepting it, it means that's what they're going to present.
It just was the meeting minutes February fourth, you know, uh.
Yeah, could you? Could you read the motion that they made again?
Uh, there was no, I, I have nothing.
There's no motion?
I, I have nothing here that identifies motion.
Well, somebody, somebody, somebody approved it and somebody seconded it. Right, it was carried unanimously, so they had to have documented a motion.
It's, it, like I said, it's kind of like right here in the middle of it, you know, asked for thirteen technology, blah, 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 eleven. Doctor Longo would like to remind us this budget will be the honeymoon budget for the new superintendent, Jane Urban said technology is what's keeping this afloat this year.
Yeah.
Blah, 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 blah.
I know, I saw that.
Insurance device, I got nothing here. Insurance device. I got nothing here.
There's no motion?
It just says motion by Kim to accept the budget increase. Motion was seconded and carried unanimously.
There's nothing that says what the budget increase is?
It was the well, with a budget of a two point nine eight percent increase.
Okay, so that's what it is. Um, so what we've got is what they, what they approved within their own group.
What do they do on Thursday?
This Thursday?
Didn't you say this Thursday they were voting on something?
Doctor Longo will try to get to the budget of the school board by two twelve, so they can review it before it's presented to the Board of Finance on two eighteen.
Okay.
So when he's doing that, what he's doing is all the pros that goes into the budget package.
Yeah. Okay.
So uh he must have been working with this, the work like we're like we are with a worksheet or whatever that said what the budget was gonna be. And they approved that, and now he has to uh get the package together for them. And then that package has to get off to the Board of Finance by at least uh this Friday or next Monday in order for the Board of Finance to have enough time to review it before they present, before the school formally presents it on Thursday of next week. So I'd, I would expect they'd get it out on Monday to everybody. Uh which is just like what I would like to do, not for that week, but for the following week. Is to make sure that the Board of Finance receives our budget a couple days in advance, so they can look at it themselves, and then they can ask salient questions.
Now, we were able to get an extension, right, Catherine?
What we're gonna do, yes, we did, uh and actually, it worked out better for them and for us. One of the things that'll happen is when we go to present, we'll have the numbers right here for the other budgets.
That's great.
Yeah, I think that that's a better sequence to do things in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and um I wish I wish I kind of really thought about it when I was Chair of the Board of Finance, but uh it was kind of, I always followed whatever we had been doing before.
I I think part of that is because the Board of Selectmen has always been dependable to get them stuff when we tell them we're going to, and that's not the case with either the Board of Ed or the Region nineteen historically.
Yeah, and um.
We were first in the basket.
Yeah. So with this, what's great is we get to show everything in concert or everything together. And um what we should know by the twenty third, uh which is well before we present, is we should know what Region nineteen adjusts to. They're having a meeting on the twenty third. So they may have uh more adjustments at that point in time than what we have right here. We've got the raw budget that was submitted by the superintendent.
When is that presentation again?
They're going to have their um at Region nineteen, they're gonna be doing that on February twenty third.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
I mean, uh just as far as uh I'm, yeah, finish this up. I just had a question on the capital projects.
Yes, and actually, I thought we'd go to that after we um finished working this up, because that's a separate animal.
Excellent.
There's a lot of good news there.
Yeah, there is good news. Yeah, it worked out pretty well under the circumstances. Uh, okay, so gentlemen, what are we doing with this one? Am I at a point where we can say that this is something that we're ready to put forth as a Board of Selectmen?
That. So we are, I mean, what we're proposing right now is a budget with a.
Two point six percent increase for us.
Okay.
It's ninety thousand four oh seven.
Yeah.
Um. And we have been taking hits every single year for the last three years.
Hmm.
And in some ways, and we understand how that all came about. The education budget tends to kind of suck the life out of some of what we're trying to do, because we have to cinch our belts.
Yeah.
Um, and no one's being spent thrift here. It's more along the lines of there's some things we do need to get done. And uh um and we do need to address. So where do we go from here as a board on this? Are you, are you ready to approve this? So that I can go and I can put together a summary of the different uh, you know, uh update, uh different increases, decreases in it? Because I would like to present the uh Board of Finance with something more than a work, with essentially a worksheet, but something that's a summary of the changes. And I need to have the numbers to work with to do it.
How are you feeling, Bill?
And Chris? Well, yeah.
I'm, I'm feeling like with the picture that we're being going right now, it's a presentable budget.
I think so too.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have one question, though, Chris. Chris, Cheryl had that one change, with that one change, that one amount. And I forgot what it was.
Mid Niroc.
Mid Niroc.
It was the Household Chemical Waste Facility.
Okay, let me go up there, and we're gonna uh do a little bit of explaining on that.
It's thirty four thousand, Department thirty four thousand.
Thank you. Um, I'm not as good at doing it by the numbers as.
And it's um Household Chemical Waste. We budgeted three thousand. We increased it because we knew there was gonna be an increase because of the um change in vendor vendors.
Yes, so this one, uh what did we make the number?
We the number we got today.
Yes.
Is three thousand seven twenty eight.
Seven hundred and twenty eight more.
Yep.
Okay, so and uh so we are still at two point six three percent. Let's just make sure this added up, okay? What was our old number? Was it ninety four oh seven? What am I not doing right here?
Ninety four oh seven.
Okay, I just need to look back here. Make sure I got it right.
So it's ninety one one thirty five.
Just doing a little blank out here. Oh, because I put it in the wrong place. You'd think my new glasses would be doing better for me here. I have ninety one one thirty five. What do you have again?
That's what you.
Ninety one one thirty five.
Good. Okay, uh so we're two point six five percent, ninety one thousand one thirty five. And gentlemen, uh would one of you like to make a motion on this, or do you want to wait until we look at the capital improvement budget?
Let's look at the capital improvement budget.
You got it.
That that adjusted figure, how does that reflect on the thirty four thousand four dollars that we had in total reduction?
Actually, it's now thirty three thousand two seventy six.
Right.
Thirty three.
Two seven six. Which is a point two two percent. Zero point two two percent decrease overall.
Two point.
Is zero point two two percent decrease. If you look right here, you'll see it right here.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
You're gonna send this all out to us to.
Yes, sir. Yes, I will. And I'm just gonna do a quick save. And the other thing I want to do is look at capital improvement. Just gotta go find it. And Chris, that one you did send out.
I'm sorry, I've sent it out this morning to everybody.
Thanks. And that one came out at eleven eleven oh three AM, and it says at, uh I'm gonna bring that over to the screen too. Let's see if, can you see this on my screen, this email?
Yep.
Oh, cool. Now I, now I've mastered how to get this stuff in the right place. Okay, so at their meeting on Saturday, February, February thirteenth, the Capital Projects Committee unanimously voted to recommend acceptance by the Board of Selectmen of the attached five-year capital plan. So I'm gonna open this plan and have the pleasure of going through it. Uh, Bill, I know you're familiar with it. You were at the meeting. And um so what we have in the plan for, I'm just gonna highlight here the yellow column. No, I can't even do that. Um, oh yeah, I can. Do it in a good way. Can you see that column being yellow?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at, and I'm gonna try and walk you through. Uh, road resurfacing, uh provided we don't have a major, major, major snowstorm of Joe feels that he could uh get by with the two hundred and five thousand. Uh, the mini excavator is on here. It's part of a five-year lease purchase. Um, so then revale.
No, there's asterix on mine. There's an asterix next to it.
Is this the one you received today?
Yep. It's got a little.
Sure, because I'm looking at the one that was sent out.
It's the same date, everything. Okay, my bad.
No, no problem.
Earlier, but okay.
All right.
Because my understanding was that that was supposed to be if, you know, if money's allowed.
And that's what we worked out. I'm gonna show you how.
Okay.
That's what the previous discussions were, Roger.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we met on.
Then materialized. Everybody thought that uh it would be a good idea instead of deferring the excavator again to put it in there.
All right.
And not only that, um we found a way to fund some things uh through uh something else, so to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so um the one you have, Roger, should say at the bottom, it should say nine hundred and thirty thousand forty five dollars.
Affirmative, yep.
Okay, so now you can look at the screen, and I can talk you through.
Yep.
That helps. So the road resurfacing, we were able to reduce. The mini excavator is on there. Revale, uh Chris, we have the correct number for revale?
Yes, that's the second installment.
And you know what we don't have on here? Don't we have something that says what it is each year after that? Is there like a seven?
We have something, but we don't think it's right. We have to check and make sure.
So um we think that there's something around somewhere between seven and eight thousand. Uh, there's an additional thing for revale over the period of the five years, the additional three. Uh, because I think this was the second year.
Yeah, that was the second installment on the payment to adopt the new system.
Yeah, and actually, when all is said and done, we have a larger number for twenty twenty one. It will go on here. That's the one where we went to the Board of Select, uh Board of Finance and said, uh, you know, with the contract, we had, we wanted to pay this year, and we were gonna go over. So I'm not gonna bog us down there. Right now, we're looking at the uh proposed year. So the fire department still have the fu- the fire truck lease, school bus ninety thousand, they don't need a van. They're saying they don't need a van for two years. This heat exchanger, the um, the heat exchanger, the roof replacement planning and design. Um, that uh we, it's recommended to be paid from the school's unexpended one percent fund. We affectionately call it the one percent fund. Because there's money in it and or will be in it uh to be able to take care of that.
Excellent.
Okay, so that took some of the heat off.
Now, Catherine, do I remember right, we had fifty seven thousand audited figure with anticipated close to that for this year, totaling about ninety nine thousand. I think they're calling it the unexpended fund now.
Yeah, it was called the, it is actually formally called the Ashford School Unexpended Fund. And um Roger, that's uh monies that were not expended out of the cool bu- school budget. They were left over.
Okay.
Okay, and each year, they uh, the Board of Fu- Board of Education, when they have monies left over, and they appear to have them left over every year, um, they come to the Board of Finance once the audit is done by the end of the year for a given fiscal year.
Hmm.
And they make a request of the Board of Finance to move the excess monies over into the unexpended fund. And the rule around that fund's use is that it's for school stuff, but it's only for capital improvements that are on the approved capital improvement plan. Anything else is considered a variance, and the Board of uh Finance can certainly say that, you know, that you you can have the variance if you need to get something like a uh a warmer for your kitchen, you know, a food warmer. That was the first thing they ever bought out of the unexpended fund. So anyway, but there are monies, those excess monies go into there, and they're allowed to accumulate to a certain point. And uh what's happened is they haven't moved the monies from the the recently completed um audit, the recently completed audit of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year fiscal year.
Hmm.
Typically, they try to do that, you know, usually around the end of the year, once the audit is done. But the school hasn't requested it, therefore they didn't do it. So um what will happen is the school's going to make a request to move the monies over. And uh then those monies will be used, uh can be used to fund these things that the school wants.
Okay.
Okay? So uh, and the other recommendation I think we would make is that they, the seventeen thousand five hundred, once monies are moved over there, that they use the monies to pay for that too. And if you took them all together, the heat exchanger, the other, you'd have seventy nine thousand five hundred dollars for those things that they want done that are outside of, you know, going for full-blown um bonding for the school. So let's see.
So then, then those will be then removed from the capital projects, right?
No, actually, they'll be in the capital projects, but then what'll happen is if you go down to the bottom, you can see suggested funding. And what you're gonna see is the uh, where is it here? Ashford School Unexpended Fund is the last thing on line sixty five on the screen. And the sixty two thousand for next year to fund those two items that they want will come from there.
Okay.
We haven't put anything in here for the current year based upon that seventeen thousand five hundred that they just discovered that they needed. Um, but that won't happen until once they make a request to move monies over. Where, now we get a little bit ahead of the cart, so to speak. Okay, so uh, let's see, the other thing that's still, that's in here. Uh, let's see, the Cadel Rock, the Playscape, Cadel Rock. Um, Chris.
Yep.
Um, I think if we understand correctly, we did another assessment on that. And we haven't submitted for the, the final grant. We've got an approval to submit for the grant. But I think what we're looking at is submitting for two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand because that will also cover legal costs.
Right, um, I, I was in contact with our environmental attorney, Ann Cutino. And she's estimating that it could be anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five thousand to deal with
liens.
Post, anything we have, any legal issues we have during the remediation. And then an after-action plan after the remediation is completed. We're hoping that they'll allow us to roll that into the grant so that we can deal with the liens, the consent orders. And it's just not, and Mr. Cadel. So we figured we'd, we'd apply high, we can always not spend it, return it. Actually, it's not return it, we just don't spend it.
So what we're looking at here, Roger and Bill, is what the Capital Improvement Committee recommends to the Board of Selectmen. We then have the ability to say, we want to put the two-seventy-five in there. And that's what we would be presenting to the Board of Finance. So I just wanted to ask if you'd like to do that.
I'd rather, I'd rather estimate high than estimate low.
I agree.
You know.
What do you, what do you think, Roger?
Uh, I, I mean, I defer to those of you with more experience than I.
Well, absolutely. In this particular thing, if we estimate low, we're gonna take it on the chin because we're gonna have to find the rest of the money for the legal stuff.
Yep.
So if we put in for the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, you know, there's a pretty good chance we're gonna get that. I don't think that we have a lot of issues around getting the, um, the funding for this.
Right, we make, we make the adjustment for the expenditure and the revenue. And like I said, whatever we spend, we get reimbursed for. And at the end of the grant period, if we haven't spent it, we haven't spent it, we lose it.
So so Bill, I know you followed this whole thing through because you were in the meeting as well. So what that does is takes us up to the, no, I don't have the right number here. Why am I got it wrong? Two-seventy-five, and this comes up to fifty, two-seventy-five down here, comes up to
One fifty-five.
Five. Let me go back to the two-fifty because I could have sworn the numbers matched before. What'd they do, throw in something? That's right, I don't think so.
Now, the money that we're going to put in the grant for, is that limited to two-fifty, Chris? Or can we put in for two-seventy-five?
We haven't filed the application yet. We got approval to apply for the grant. So we have to come up with a budget, and the budget will probably be two-fifty for the engineering for the remediation and then twenty-five for legal.
Yeah, I followed you on that, but I, for some reason, I had it in my mind, the max we could apply for was two-fifty.
No, not for the brownfields. The maximum for the brownfields, I believe, is four million.
Okay, okay, good.
Want to apply for four million?
Throw it in there.
Can I have some? So let me just do this. Chris, this looks a little bizarre, okay? When, it's not you, I just want you to look at it with me. Okay, so the two-fifty, we had the nice matching number. Oh, I know what it is, just didn't add it up.
It's nine fifty-five oh forty-five.
Yep.
In both places.
It wasn't adding.
Without the adding machine.
Quit bragging. My grandmother used to tell me to eat peanut butter and fish to keep my brain sharp for math. So let's do the two-seventy-five here. And fifty-five, up here, go to the Hey, well, we have subtitles. No, I missed one. Got it. Sorry for the delay, guys. All right, so, um, looking at this, uh, let's see, the HVAC system is also in there, which is good. And the funding, when we look at the funding, two-seventy-five for this, LoSIP, fifty-two sixty-three, Town Aid Road, CNR, we're looking at two-ninety-five, seven thirty-seven, which is, um, which was very acceptable to Chuck Funk, who was in the meeting, looking at what's happening with CNR. Okay, and then we have the steep grant for Pompey Hollow Park and the Ashford School Unexpended Fund. So gentlemen, any questions about this one? And are we, would someone want, are we in agreement that this is what we would like to present to the Board of Finance?
For the Capital Improvement Fund?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, anymore discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, against, abstain, motion passes. Thank you. Good. That's okay, I'll take care of that after. All right, going back to our to our town budget. Our recommendation for the general government budget. Um, are we ready to make a motion to recommend three million, five-hundred-twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-eighteen? An increase of ninety-one thousand, one thirty-five or two-point-six-five percent?
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, motion passes. Thank you. Nicely done. Okay, going back to, I just want to get back to our agenda, if I can find it here. Uh, remarks for the good of the board. Oh, before we say, before we do that, I'll write a summary of our budget, like I said, to, for our presentation to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, just a summary, the same way Mike would have done it, or Ralph.
To the Board of Finance.
For the Board of Finance. After all these years, I still screw that up.
Um, and is that gonna include the capital improvement and explanation?
Yes, and with the capital improvement budget, what I'm, will be doing is we used to have in the budget book that went out to the public, we used to have just before the capital improvement spreadsheet page at the back end of the, the budget book. We used to have a description of the projects that are in flight, the capital improvement projects that are in flight, what their original allocation was and where they stand, what's been spent so far and their status and when we expect them to end, for example, if there's any out there. So we would do it for any in-flight capital improvement projects. And then we would also, and a great example would be the one for the fire truck, okay? Um, where we already had said that's what we were gonna, we had approved that previously. And then we'll show for the current, you know, for the, the next year, what has been, what we are saying that budget would be, and a description of each of the items that are in there. So that anybody, whether it's the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, anybody in the public can tell what our capital improvement efforts are and what their status is. They should know that when they go into the process of deciding whether or not they're going to approve our capital improvement plan along with everything else when we have our referendum. Sound good?
I think that's very helpful.
Yes, I do too. Many years ago, Joan Bowley challenged me on that. And so I had it in the budget packages that I had for the Board of Finance. Somewhere along the way, they kind of lost that. So we're gonna get it back in there.
The only thing I would just remind all of us is the reason we're being able basically to propose a cut in this budget is because of E.O. Smith. And that's short-lived because
Yes.
The next two years will be on the other side of this.
Exactly. Okay, remarks for the good of the board?
Well, thank you for all your work on it, Catherine, and.
Yep.
Thank you guys for partnering with me, going through it here. That was good. Okay, and.
I will move a German.
Thank you, sir. So do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, John.